Township of Precipity Troy Hills Township Council Special Meeting, December 29, 2015. Meeting call to order by myself at 4:05 PM. Please rise for flag salute. Stanton, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Karifi.
Here.
Mr. DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Peluso.
Present.
Mr. Stanton.
Here.
Mr. Valori.
Here.
Others present. Mayor Barberio, Ellen Emma Sandman, Business Administrator, John Inglesino, Esquire, Township Attorney, Annem Cucci, CFO, Leslie Miller, Deputy Register. The agenda of this meeting, as the extent known, is as follows: Public hearing and adoption of ordinance 2015 colon 29, ordinance approving the financial agreement for long-term tax exemption by and between the Township of Precipity Troy Hills and BT Property Urban Renewal Company, LLC. Discuss the take-action or resolutions awarding a contract for health benefits to insurance design administrators, authorizing 2015 budget appropriation transfers, and authorizing an agreement with the City of Jersey City, the Jersey City Municipal Utilities Authority, and the Township of Precipity Troy Hills to supply bulk water to Precipity Troy Hills. Any other action reasonably related thereto may also be taken. Formal action may or may not be taken.
Statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on December 21, 2015, where it has remained posted since that date. Legal notice appeared in the Daily Record on December 22, 2015, and was forwarded by fax out of local newspapers on December 21, 2015.
Okay, ordinance's second reading, public hearing. Mr. DePiero.
Ordinance number 2015 colon 29, an ordinance approving the financial agreement for long-term tax exemption by and between the Township of Precipity Troy Hills and BT Property Urban Renewal Company, LLC. Notice for the ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, on December 18, 2015. Motion to accept ordinance 2015 colon 29.
Second. Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Peluso. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. This time, I'll entertain a motion, open up a public hearing on this ordinance and this ordinance only.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Peluso. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah, all right. So, just so the public is aware, make a couple of preparatory comments that may answer some of your questions, or may not. This is another important step in the redevelopment process that will result in bringing UPS to Precipity to construct approximately 200,000-square-foot office building on site that is currently vacant land, and is, as they say, a result of a process that began back in December of 2013, when the council first passed a resolution that initiated the redevelopment process. And there were many steps along the way that were taken, public votes both by the council and by the planning board, that resulted in approval of a redevelopment plan, site plan approval, area in need of redevelopment report, public hearing on that by the planning board, and now a financial agreement that has been negotiated by the municipality and UPS. It is what they call a payment in lieu of taxes. Now, UPS has been very upfront in indicating that they had the option of either staying in New Jersey and relocating their facility from Bergen County, Paramus, I believe it is, to this new facility in Precipity, or moving down to Atlanta, Georgia, Marietta, Georgia. And that there were two main things that they needed in order to stay in New Jersey. One was a grow New Jersey grant, which I believe the amount was $40 million or so, which they received from the state, and the other was a payment in lieu of tax agreement with Precipity. And they were upfront about that, not only to Precipity, but they were upfront about that in their application to New Jersey EDA, Economic Development Authority, in applying for their grow New Jersey grant. And so, members of the administration, the business administrator, and Ms. Sandman and Ms. Cucci, negotiated a financial agreement that is hugely beneficial to the Township of Precipity and to its taxpayers. Some of the financial benefits of this arrangement are, first of all, there's an application fee, which is the smallest benefit, is about $6,000. There's also a 2.5% of project cost to Precipity's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Mr. Casseas, who's here tonight, estimates that fee to be approximately $600,000. They've paid $300,000 already, and they would pay another $300,000. That number will be adjusted based upon Mr. Casseas's computation of the project cost at the time of the CO. There is a 2% annual administrative fee over and above the pilot amount, which, if you calculate it over a 30-year period, which is the duration of the agreement, comes to about $800,000, comes to $800,000 for Precipity. There are, of course, connection fees, which are significant, but I don't know what they are, and there are the pilot payments. Now, those pilot payments total just under $40 million over 30 years, $39,428,220, to be exact. If the land were to be, remain vacant, and right now, the land generates approximately $250,000 a year as vacant land, it's 248, call it 250. If that land were to remain vacant, even if you increase the land tax by 2% per year, and as we know, over the last several years, Precipity has held tax increases to well under 2%, but even if you were to be very conservative and increased that tax rate by 2%, then over the 30-year period, Precipity would realize $10 million from the value of this property. So, over 30 years, based upon the deal that's been negotiated, it's a $30 million windfall, profit, advantage, whatever word you want to call, for Precipity taxpayers. And in addition to that, of course, there'll be UPS headquarters with hundreds of jobs, high-paying jobs, and so those are essentially, I think, the terms and the benefits of the financial agreement.
Thank you. Okay, if any members of the public would like to come up, please state your name and address and sign in. You'll be given three minutes.
Charlie, you did an excellent job recapping it and getting to answer a lot of my questions. Thank you. Why can't we get this stuff ahead of time, you know, a few days or even an hour to read this? Because it's a lot, because I'm a little miscombobulated here. I'll make a piece later. It's a joke. A million dollars a year, that's the taxes of the pilot?
There's a schedule, and, you know, it's on for tonight. Obviously, the council has had this well in advance, and has been apprised, and they've had all the different drafts.
I'm not blaming you.
Yeah, no, but this is, well, it's a deliberative document until it's voted on. On Exhibit D of the pilot agreement, you will see, I'm sorry, go ahead, you have other questions.
Okay, so, New Jersey gave me the grant at part of the tax dollars, $3 million. This is a pilot program. None of this money goes to the school board?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, correct.
What was that $800,000 of, John? Is that a winter?
No, it's each year, you pay 2% of the service charge as an administrative fee.
Okay. As you all know, I spoke about pilot funding, ladies and gentlemen, a year ago, on our situation in town. Mayor, this is our first pilot in Precipity project?
I know.
Well, there's a, there actually was a pilot for Brookside, but it was under a different set of circumstances.
Yes, right. Senior citizen.
It was housing through the New Jersey HMFA that resulted in that.
No, that's good. I think this is accurate.
Dan's giving me a thumbs up, so I got that one right. Dan gave me a thumbs up.
Yeah, Danny.
The only thing is, and I ask, you know, it's not UPS, you know the traffic's going to be a lot more traffic. I live on that side of town. 202 is already a parking lot, two hours in the morning, two hours at night. I'm not sure what the ingress and egress is going to be for this project. I know that's another venue here tonight. Water, it's going to be less, would have gone back into our T G wells and the havens and plants, and all that's going to be taken into account. UPS is an excellent company, it's been an excellent neighbor over here, across from the old Daily Record building. A lot of the people that work for UPS live in town, so it's all on the side. No school board.
That's correct. And the other thing is, it's 750 jobs.
Yep.
That's quite, quite significant. And we'll be working, we'll be...
Marietta, Atlantic, San Diego.
Well, Precipity is beautiful this time of year, and we'll be working closely, closely with them, with the UPS, and one of the things, you talk about traffic, that's all stuff that still needs to be worked through, and we'll be, you know, they'll work very well with us. They're a reputable company.
Nick Homiak, Lake Hiawatha. If the state has already given UPS, I believe, instead of $40 million, some kind of a break or something, I don't understand why Precipity has to give UPS a break for something that they've already given tax break for, and they would probably move to Precipity anyway. The part that disturbs me is that we're calling it redevelopment plan. It's not a redevelopment plan, it's new land development, and it happens to be on an environmentally sensitive landscape, other aquifer recharge we're going to pave over, like Roy said, that has to be considered. I walked that landscape. It has a lot of water, called hydraulic soils, they're very important to environmental health. Most of them will be eliminated.
A week, if you want to add.
And if you divide here, if you divide $800,000 into 30, you come out to 26,666, that magic number that keeps on coming back.
Okay, that's a good point.
The 3/6 is a year for Precipity. So, I don't, I don't think it's worth it. And if the high-paying jobs, are these going to be jobs for Precipity, or are these jobs going to be transferred from the already employed people who are working in Precipity? Are they going to be fired and rehired? I'd like to hear exactly how high-paying these jobs are, and, you know, their benefits. Are these real UPS employees, or are they subcontractors? Because when I went to a few of these meetings, and by the way, the tax break was never brought up at any of those meetings that I remember, I went to a couple of them, but are these real UPS employees? Are they? And the point I was making, they said that they, we didn't have to worry about the traffic because the traffic was going to be intermittent, meaning that they weren't going to do 40-hour a week. They were going to be there certain days of the week, but there'd be a 1,002 parking lot, parking lot for 1,002 vehicles.
30 seconds, just so you know.
All right, and that's all I have to say. I just don't think it's worth the loss of the quality of life, and we're the killer of effects on our water supply. It's all going to, it's all going to catch up with Precipity. Throw water view and everything else in there. We're not recognizing our environmentally sensitive areas, like our master plan says, it's all, it's all going to catch up with us eventually. And this, in a true sense, is really not redevelopment. So, I'll leave it at that.
One of the things I'd like to mention, Nick, in working with the people from UPS, my understanding is the salaries are, you know, upwards of $200,000. They are here if they need to speak to, are they truly UPS employees? And I would like to...
I don't know that it's relevant to, it's not really relevant to...
Well, they're here, and could they just answer the question?
They're supposed to be relevant, correct?
All right, then we'll let it go. Thank you.
Okay, see no one else come forward. I entertain a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance.
Motion, second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Peluso. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution, second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Peluso. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. Resolution R. 2015-200. Mr. Peluso.
Resolution designating BT Property Urban Renewal Company, LLC, as the redeveloper of the property known as Block 136, Block 43.3 in the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement with BT Property Urban Renewal Company, LLC, for the redevelopment of such property for office use in accordance with the redevelopment plan. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Peluso, seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. This time, entertain a motion, open up the public hearing.
Make a motion, second.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Peluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Karifi.
Yes. If you come forward, please state your name and address, sign in, you'll be given five minutes.
It's the second thing connected to them. It's connected with them.
Maybe just tap that, I don't know if it's on. No?
Hope you got Roy's. Papa Tacha, 182 Hawkins Avenue. Got a few questions, and I, first of all, the first one I'll start off with is, once again, I'm a little concerned that we say that we're having an emergency meeting for one thing, and then we have other things on the agenda to be voted on. You're not giving the public the upfront that they're supposed to have. One of the biggest things being New Jersey City water renewal. That's a big one, and I've asked you guys to check into that contract, whether or not it is absolutely necessary for Precipity to keep faking out this money. And it's a part of the big development that's coming in, too. Are we doing it just because we want this development? I think we've discovered we really don't really have a need for it, but I would appreciate it.
I know, I know, we usually wait to the end.
Yeah.
But this is so sensitive, and I did negotiate this. First of all, this is a requirement by the...
DEP.
Yeah, by the DEP and the State of New Jersey. Precipity needs to have another source of water. So, this costs us $2,248, so that we don't have to dig a well. That will cost us millions of dollars to supply that excess water. This is water that we probably will never use, but we need to have another source of water by the DEP and all the state riggers, because they say you have to supply water. This is not for growth, this is for in case there's a drought. They are very strict, and what this is, and we're going through the Jersey City water, it should have been done a little while ago, but I just got involved in it. What we did was, we reached out to them. I spoke with the finance officer of the Jersey City MUA. I asked, I knew what my bulk rate was at this present time. It's less, it's going to be $22.48 for the bulk rate, and this is a requirement, this is an obligation. This is not something that we're doing for growth, it's because...
It's a requirement for Precipity.
For Precipity.
Is it a requirement for any other town?
Every town.
Every town, okay.
Denville, I thank God that I was, Black Birch was right next to the Mars County MUA, and I was able to, the $33,000 that they fronted, I was able to have that second source of water, that is a requirement. It's a, it's a, it's an obligation that we have to have.
And going anyplace else wouldn't have been cheaper to go look anyplace else?
No, this is a very good rate, and it's the bulk rate, and they're, and they do give to other places. And now, I'm going to kid around a little bit. Plus, if they weren't so cooperative, I was going to just drill a hole over here and go to get the water directly. So, they were very cooperative. But seriously, I want to let you know that this is, this is what this is. This is not something, and again, it was the 11th hour, even though the gentleman said we would not shut off, you know, the source if you needed that, it's an emergency source, that's a requirement. But what they did say was, you know, they would certainly keep supplying water. Again, then, I apologize, we'll try to not do this, but I took advantage of the fact that there was a meeting, and now that you know what it is, it wasn't something that, I don't want to say it's pro forma, it's an obligation, and a serious obligation, and I wanted to get it done before the end of the year. So, that's, that's, that's straight.
Can I, can I just give some older background, if I can, on this? Going, going back to when, this is not your time, this is my time.
Okay, just want to make sure of that.
Okay, yeah, sorry. It just was so sensitive.
Going back to when Frank Ferrari was the mayor, we did a sort of groundwater analysis to see how much water we really had underground, and we projected if every piece of land in Precipity were developed the way it was zoned, would we have enough water in the ground to cover all of Precipity's future needs? We did that with the Sewetry Plan, too, with the 15 million gallon per day capacity. And the answer was, we have sufficient water in the ground to meet all of Precipity's needs. Now, that was our answer. So, when the DEP came out with this requirement that we can only pump so many gallons...
Yes.
...out of the ground, okay, they're looking at the whole state. We're looking at just Precipity. Yeah, we have enough water right underneath us, but they're looking at the whole state. And those Artesian wells, wherever they're filled from, the glaciers or wherever, they also feed other wells downstream. So, we could draw a lot more out of there if we needed it in a severe drought, but further downstream, they would be hurt.
But we are using Jersey City water now for residents.
Yes.
But I don't understand that, then.
So, the DEP is protecting other towns by restricting how much water we can draw out of the ground, and that was the primary reason they wanted us to have an alternate water source. So, if there is a severe drought, they don't, they want us to use that alternate source before we pull out every last ounce that we're entitled to out of the ground.
Okay. Then my question would be, why are some residents on using that water?
They're not using that particular water. That's a million gallons of reserve. All we're doing is securing it for $2,000, you know, to make sure that in case...
I thought Jersey City water was being used in houses, that it is being...
Yeah.
It is.
There are some, but this is, this is a separate and apart from that.
It is separate?
Yeah, as, yeah, as what Mike is referring to is, again, it was a protection of, you know, we could take all the water out of the wells, because we're groundwater. Years ago, in the 20s and the 30s, Jersey City was smart, they brought all the water out here. So, there, all the, you know, the surface water is going down to Jersey City, and they're selling it to Hoboken, to us, to Lynnhurst. So, I've, and coming from Jersey City, I'm very aware of it, and like I said, they formed an MUA. They used to have their own water utility, but now they're, it's through the MUA, and I did work with them and say, you know, and the rate that we have is the rate, that the bulk rate, that all towns that are pursuing water from the Jersey City MUA are paying, you know, paying that rate. And I will tell you that the bulk rate today is more than the bulk rate will be starting January of 2016.
By the way, that water tastes lousy.
No kidding, it smells, too.
Yes.
Well, I always got the best cup of tea from Jersey City, and that was the water from up here, so, but I think it was because I was at my mother's house.
It must have been those tea leaves you used.
Right.
Okay. Okay. All right, have we heard from Mr. Briscoe?
I don't know how it...
Is he going to be showing up? We're now going into a new year, this is dragging on and on. We need to get him in here to answer the questions that Mr. Inglesino cannot. You know, the only pockets that are getting full here are the attorneys. Taxpayers are losing money left and right. We're the ones that are being hurt. And was the letter sent to Devine?
It was.
It was. Did we receive a response yet?
I don't know if he responded to the letter, but he did, he did, there was a response from him with regards to dismissal, and that's all I know right now. I haven't spoke to Dennis.
Okay. But we definitely need to get him in here. I mean, this is ridiculous. And my final question... This for Mr. Stanton. Brian, I know it's your last day up there, and I do thank you, but as you know, I cannot let this go. Do you have any gumption to answer any of these questions that were approached to you back in January, March, and February of 2013 regarding the January 13 secret meeting? No, okay.
Nothing illegal went on, and that was it.
But you never told us what you wanted the resumes and stuff for, so that kind of... But I do wish everybody a happy new year. Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicholas Homiak, again, Lake Hiawatha. There was no agenda listed when I looked for the meeting for today, and I heard it was UPS, because I would have brought some information to contradict what Mr. DiPiero said. Precipity gets 65% of its water from the Burried Valley Aquifer, and it has, we have two additional water sources, the Jersey City and the Morris County Municipal. Without those sources, Precipity would not have enough water to sustain itself. If there is a drought where there will be water restrictions, and then it'll be us taking water, Jersey City taking water, you have less and less water. Once again, if you look at a map of the alleged redevelopment, I could show it to you right here, the planning board was upset when I showed this. This, that's the block lot, right there, you see in purple, that is an aquifer recharge area. That's the Block 136, 43.3, and all around it. So, you're going to be paving over this, you're going to be diminishing again what is 65% of whatever water is going, going back to the wells, so now you're depending more and more on your private sources. If there's a drought, they can jack the prices, and don't think that they won't, especially if it's privatized. Now, NJDP, I think, I think I explained this to the council before, they have a much lower standard for determining whether you have enough water or not. They, it's based on pumpage, and I believe it's five years. You've been pumping this amount of water out of your aquifer for five years. Well, guess why? You can keep on pumping it. The Highlands, if we're in conformance, a lot of these things would, would be, we'd have solutions, and we'd, and we'd have, we'd have exact and smart development where it should be, whether it's necessary, number one, and where it should be, number two. But if we keep on ignoring, we don't, we're not protecting our wellheads, we're not protecting our recharge areas, and the result is going to be in the future catastrophic. If UPS really wanted to come to Precipity in Morris County, where we have an overabundance of vacant office space, I can't see why they can't occupy an already built building. And all the water equations and everything supposedly are built into this already. So, now you're going to, you're going to come up with another equation, it's just going to favor the developer, and it's not going to be realistic when it comes to how it's going to affect the future of our... to affect the future of our, of our water. The Highlands, and we go back into Conformance any times, they look at the rate of recharge. What is your rate of recharge? That's what you depend on. NJDP has a lower standard, and I hate to say it, it's purposely to favor developers. And then they pretend that we have a disciplined society when everybody has to, we're all going to conserve water and everything like that. Those things don't happen. They don't happen. And the Jersey City water, we, we do use it because we're paying for it. And I believe it's, I could be wrong, I, I could have brought the figure with me, I think it's $270,000 a year for a minimum of 247 million gallons, whether we use it or not. So, to say that this new deal is based on a reserve, I find that whole thing absurd to make sure we have enough water.
30 seconds.
All right, we already have the two private sources because we don't have enough water. So, take WaterView, take this, like I said, everything else, asking for trouble in the future. Asking for trouble in the future. And when you drink the water, can you really trust it? You ever think of why so many people get bottled water at the store? The people don't trust the water that they drink. And the water from Jersey City has a lot of contaminants. And I could have brought that information, too, if it was on the agenda that the, that this deal with the Jersey City was coming up. So, it's like another surprise attack. I thought we were here to talk about UPS. It's related to the water, but we want to talk about water, I could have brought a lot of information. Thank you.
Um, may, may I just give the, um, the details with regard to this? First of all, this is not a new deal, this is a renegotiated deal. In 2005, you had the same arrangement with the Jersey City, uh, what it, what, you know, what a department probably then, I don't believe it was, um, it could have been an MUA, but I'm not sure. Uh, the thing is, um, that was a 10-year agreement and then it expired, and they approached us to ask us if we wanted to continue, uh, receiving this additional water. And as I said, this is, this is just water that is required for the emergency, um, you know, so that, um, and we're obligated, it's, you know, you have to have, you know, this other source of water. It has nothing to do with those, having that other water, this is in addition to it. This is a million gallons and it's $2248, which is 2,000, it's right in the resolution, So, that's, um, what we're paying to be in compliance with the DEP and compliance with, um, Kevin Ryan, who is our water purveyor, that needs an additional source of, of water. So, this is a, not, this isn't, this is just a continuation, uh, and it is for five years as opposed to 10. Yeah, do you want to say anything?
Roy Messman, Tender on the Drive. I just want to say something, a few things. I'm very happy to see that UPS stuck around. We've all been to enough of these meetings where the people get what they, you know, what they came for and then they leave, and it's very nice, you're going to be good neighbors. You are already good neighbors. Um, another thing I think the public should know, that this property 20 years ago was approved for 290,000 square feet. It's in our master plan. They're only taking 200,000. Now, I understand what Nick is saying, I'm very concerned about the environment, too, and I'm sure everybody here, because somebody has to live somewhere and they got to eat and they got to drink, but, uh, this is a good project and I'm really proud that, I'm really impressed that they stuck around, the whole staff. A couple of things, though, as we hit the, the end of the year, we've had no snow, I don't think snow trucks had to go out this morning for salt, we must be doing pretty good with that budget then. And that money goes into that trust fund, right? Can't be used for anything else. Right? That we...
Yes.
Yeah, but, so, what, that's my next question. What are these two transfers tonight, then?
Yeah, now, that's...
Yeah, I'm done.
Oh, all right.
I think...
That's common. Um, every year we do appropriation transfer. As you know, the budget is a living document and, uh, depending on changes that come up, certain number, things move around. Um, in particular, the first one, which is the one that moves around for payroll, we had in reserve $265,000 for the contracts that were being negotiated this year, and that's basically allocating it up into the different departments that need it.
Okay.
Yeah, and just...
Betty, I had nothing to do with the emergency appropriations on, this is something totally different.
Yeah.
Okay, then that's okay, yeah.
Yeah.
It's just that something else came up. But like, the money, I don't, I don't know if you two can answer this, I know you're supposed to answer me on something from the last meeting, but I, I didn't bring those notes tonight, because I was just like Nick, I thought it was just going to be on this. When will you transfer the snow money to, the first of the year?
It'll be after the first of the year.
Okay, but I don't mean that day, but I mean it'd be...
We've also purchased, uh, salt and, already...
Oh, it's in inventory and all?
So, yeah.
Okay.
We, we've done that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Happy New Year. I'm going to miss you, man. You're the only guy that really knows sports up here.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, the mayor does. Oh, excuse me.
Okay, see no one else come forward to entertain a motion to close the public here?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. DiPiero, seconded by Mr. Peluso. Roll call.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Council President, before we, um, entertain the next, uh, resolution, um, I was, uh, charged with a few things to make sure that they were provided to the council before, um, we, uh, took a look at this resolution. I'm pleased to say that, um, Mike has, uh, has returned for any questions. However, um, firstly, I would like to, um, uh, state that, uh, Councilman Peluso, uh, required that in writing, there was a document from both our attorneys as well as from our, uh, from our auditor. That has been provided, great detail. That was placed in your box and also we made sure that we, we sent it out to you. So, that's the, uh, first, uh, thing of, of order. Um, the SOC report was something that was very important. If Ann wants to chime in, um, you know, if I missed something with regard to that, uh, because that is very, um, important for the payment of, um, claims. The other thing that, um, uh, is very important to note for the record is that I went, um, went through, as you know, um, the, um, the, the Assistant Administrator, uh, has, um, resigned and, and went on to another job. And, um, so she did a lot of the working with the insurance, so, um, I took, uh, took that on as a sacred trust to make sure that I would provide the information that you required. Last meeting, and as I asked if we could put this off for today's meeting, last meeting, the council president asked me, would we be able to provide, um, coverage, uh, for our, um, unions as well as for others that receive it, myself included, not in a union? And, um, I said, the reason why I felt uncomfortable answering it, not, not because I'm, I'm not involved in self-insurance, which is one of the reasons why I didn't answer at the time, because the answer is yes, and the answer is no. The thing is, is it's cost prohibitive. If you read the, um, one, two, the four bullet points that I put in, um, a letter that I addressed to Mayor and Council with regard to, you know, having a third-party payer. If in fact, the, um, we don't have a third-party, uh, payer in place, this, my staff, myself, we are unable to provide the, the necessary, um, commitment to provide for, yes, we have, we have placed insurance in various, for dental and for, you know, prescription and also for our medical, but we need the third-party payer, and IDA performs that function. Um, you know, I, I don't know if you want me to read in direct it, but one of the, point two, if you did have an opportunity to read it at, in, in depth, the TPA provides a managed care network currently, AmeriHealth, which affords a 65% discount on every, every in-network transaction. One, I couldn't take it over, I'm not, meaning I, me, Ann, we're not licensed, I'm not licensed. Number two, I can't, I don't know, how would I get 65%, uh, 65%? I'm not, we don't have enough manpower to perform this. Um, so, for example, it says, if the township has $6 million worth of in-network claims and paid annually with no network, the cost to the township would be approximately $18 million. Another point was that when I looked at the breakdown that you had asked for, um, I looked at if, um, if it, if this is costing us with, which includes all the, um, you know, all the, uh, and I'll let Mike talk to it a little bit, too, but if it includes all the things that are necessary to be the, the, uh, TPA, the third-party payer, um, and, and we, we tried to even attempt, the $10 million turns into approximately, this is approximately $30 million. And again, um, so, we wouldn't be able to provide the, 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 the prescription, the, the, and be the, the research. We don't even have, we don't have enough skilled manpower to do that. That's why, one of the last statements I do say is that's why we, um, my understanding is that furthermore, the exposure to the township would be in millions, as we, as I just said, and I know of no public or private entity anywhere in the country that manages their own medical program, unless you're an insurance or a, a TPA, uh, program, uh, and, and it would be cost prohibitive. So, I ask for your consideration, um, to work with me as, as a relatively new administration and administrator, taking on this, um, hopefully that we will have somebody else in-house. Joe Strellick does a, 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 a great job, but it's, it's a big job even in-house to in, it, work in concert with, um, the, uh, the, um, the, uh, the insurance providers as well as the third-party payer. I will also state that, um, there is that commitment that Jackie will be visiting all the, all the sites, going out to, meeting with, um, people so that we get those claims paid. And then lastly, with Mike in the room, I will say, and I make this commitment and the sacred trust to you and to the, to the public, if IDA, over the course of the next couple of months, doesn't it, you know, doesn't improve to the, to, to what we would look, we can look to another provider. But at this point, on this 29th day, I, I believe I ask for your, um, trust that this is the right thing to do at this particular time.
Um, question for you. I don't, I don't think the, the questions were really for, in reference to IDA, I think it was to, in reference to the broker, which is two separate things, correct?
Yes, and it's two separate things, but the broker is not on, on for tonight.
Right, so this, this, this resolution is strictly just for IDA, nothing to do with the broker?
Correct.
Okay.
But remember, there is a fixed cost that's involved, $38 per employee per month, which is about $280,000 that goes to Fairview out of this contract.
But if they are not the broker, then it would not go there, correct?
Correct.
What's another one?
Right. So, am I, am I correct that the broker is not being compensated by IDA currently?
No. No, no, you're, you're not correct. That's, no, right now, the broker is part of, and the broker happens to be, um, Fairview.
But Fairview was not approved by council.
Correct.
So, they're still being paid?
Yes, because that was, yes, because that was on, uh, well, we did it in closed session, but I don't know if John wants to weigh in on that. Tonight, we are providing a third-party payer that if we don't have the third-party payer, I will tell you this, I'm good, but I can't, we cannot meet the demands and the needs of our people. And, um, so the answer is...
May I make a suggestion?
We're voting on IDA, the third-party payer.
May I make a suggestion that we move into closed session for legal advice for a brief period of time regarding the IDA contract?
Make a motion.
Okay, at this time, resolution going to closed session, whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, Public Law 1975, Chapter 231, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in circum- circumstances, and whereas township councils have the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas township council, which is to discuss contractual issues, and whereas minutes will be kept, and once the matter involving the confidentiality, the above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be it resolved by the township council, the township of Persippany Troy Hills, that the public be excluded from this meeting. Motion to adjourn it to closed session made by myself, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Um, Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Make a motion to reconvene into open session?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Peluso. Roll call.
Uh, Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Peluso, you had some questions?
Uh, yes, we've, uh, we had some questions concerning the Resolution 2015, 190 for the awarding of a contract for health benefits of insurance design administrators. Um, a couple of the concerns that I had was that, uh, we did receive a letter from Nizavacia, uh, which is our accounting firm that did the audit for 2014. They noted that, uh, the IDA was not in compliance, which created an audit exception for us. They did not have a SOC 1 report, and they did not have a bridge or a gap letter, and they also noted that there were four subservice organizations that were used for processing payments of claims, and at least two of them, um, included financial transactions. Um, it's incumbent upon the township now to request IDA for the SOC reports of at least two of the subservice organizations from what he's indicating. So, um, he further stresses that, uh, he wants to ensure these controls are being followed. So, they're asking, the administration is asking us to approve an insurance contract here in which the auditor, uh, notes that they're still in violation from one year ago, and they've been given an extension several times to comply, from what I understand.
No, that's not right.
According to the letter here, it says the deadline was March 31st, 2016, that they're going to give them for the bridge or the gap letter. Is that correct?
No, no, uh, Ray, you have to read this, I mean, Ray, uh, Rob, you have to read this in concert with what the attorney is saying and what, what, what Ray actually did say. He did get the initial SOC report, there's addition...
From IDA, he did, yes.
Yes, but that, that's, that was my understanding. I'm not, I'm not here, tonight's not, we're not voting on the broker, we're voting on the IDA.
It's not about the broker, it's about the concern I had last week concerning the audit exception.
Um, can I talk about that a second? Um, yes, um, the SOC report, why this says this is because the SOC report was as of August 1st, okay? So, they, they did all the audit up to that point. We asked them to get that done for the prior year. So, what Ray is saying to follow up, he agreed with the SOC report, however, as a follow-up, which would not be an audit exception, we should ask for a letter that, called a bridge or a gap, that says, we're in compliance for this time period of August 1st through December 31st, and ask for that before March 31st of 2016, and therefore we won't have any audit coming, which I totally agree with. This letter that he sent to us is dated December 21st, so we have to do that going next week. We'll be calling you guys to do that. Um, what did come up is, and, and IDA didn't know that, when we discussed the SOC report, they also have third-party people. So, we are going to request as the next step, because this is a step-by-step process, we're going to ask for IDA to request the same report from their third-party administrators, and, and it continues on. So, this is just a follow-up to continue our, our due diligence on, on our, on our part.
Right, but you also have to read it in concert with, uh, Justin Marchetta's letter. He's saying that Ray is comfortable with this, that we will pursue it, and that at this point, there was no reason why not. I mean, you, you have the copy of the letter, I made sure that you had, you asked me for also an attorney's review of what...
Yes.
And in that letter, they are saying they are comfortable with it, moving forward, we will continue to get this, but at this point, it doesn't preclude us moving forward with, um, going with IDA, because that, that was all, all in the document. And, uh, I'm sorry for the lateness, but I didn't get it until today, and that's when you got the letter from the attorneys. I don't know, I didn't go into the closed session, so I hope that, um, the attorney did, that John mentioned that, uh, the letter. I mean, uh, we can read it into the record if you like, but, um, and here, here it is. Regarding the fiscal user controls that the DES report recommends be implemented by end-users of IDA services, it is our understanding that the township audit is working with the townships, uh, with Ann, to ensure that these controls are implemented and maintained. Given, given the implementation of said controls and IDA's satisfaction of all other requirements under the township's solicitation of proposals pursuant to NJW, we are of the opinion that the township may award a contract to IDA at this time. And this is in conversation with Ray Serenelli. Justin and John, with the oversight approval, could not have... Justin and John, with the oversight approval, could not have sent this out if in fact, they weren't in concert with our auditor, your auditor, and Ray is comfortable with that. Ann has had conversations with Ray. Ray and Ann and I met early on, and I said, I'm very disappointed, so I went right out of the office, went right to see the mayor. I said, we're gonna call Paul, the head of the IDA, and we did, and we said, it's very unacceptable, the SOC report should have been in, you said it was done August.
Right.
They said they were having difficulty getting it from the person who they actually had already paid for it. I said, I want draft documents to get the fact that you did, you paid for something that you haven't received yet. They promised the mayor that, better than that, they would get the SOC report. We got the SOC report, as soon as we got the SOC report, we sent it to Ray Serenelli, he reviewed it, and he reviewed it in depth. You asked for it in writing, I got it in writing, and what Ray is saying in the letter, maybe read between the lines, what he's saying is, we got the initial, the most important SOC report, however, they have, you know, he drilled down, because he's very thorough, he's a very good auditor, but then, in concert with conversation with our attorneys, they are comfortable that all of this will, one, no longer be an audit comment, two, that they will provide the necessary documentation that Ray is requesting, working in concert with our people, our own people here. So, that, I just wanted to make sure that there was clarity for that.
Well, I agree with working with any company, because I believe we were very patient working with them throughout the one year that we've asked them to be compliant, and we gave them a date to be compliant by in June, and they were still not compliant. So, I hope you understand my concerns, is that, you know...
I do understand your concerns, but please understand my concerns, that if this is voted down, there will be no one to deliver the service of insurance.
Let me ask you a question, Ellen. In regards to...
Because we don't have enough manpower here.
Because the contract was not provided to Council either, we have not seen it. Does the contract give us provision that we can terminate the contract with IDA at any time?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so we can terminate the contract...
As I said earlier, I said, trust me with this, and meet the dead... Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Of March 31st, 2016, for the bridge gap letter and having everything else.
I'm comfortable with that, absolutely, yes, and we're getting it right from someone that works on it.
Okay, you know, because you have to, you know, one thing I'm asking you to do is understand my concerns as a businessman and a finance expert, is that, you know, I have to be concerned about the taxpayers, the township, and most importantly, I have to be worried about the employees and the safety of the employees. We cannot have our employees without insurance, but when you peel the onion back and you look at the year that's gone by, and looking at a vendor, any vendor this could be, I'm concerned, you know, as a taxpayer, I'm an employee, too, I don't take benefits, but I'm an employee of the town and of the taxpayers, you know, that we have a vendor here that has not been compliant, you know, with an audit exception. And audit exceptions, I take very heavily, I weigh upon that in making any decision. And the seriousness of this is that, you know, they are in charge of $10 million or more of our funding to a separate account, which they have the ability to take money out of that account. So, I want to ensure that we have the right checks and balances in place and that we don't have exposure, you know, the additional concern...
Right, and I will say, I will state for the record that Mr. Serenelli's record is impeccable, and I've worked with Ray Serenelli for 30 years, and he would not have put in writing that he was comfortable, if in fact, he wasn't, when he spoke with our attorney. They discussed it, we've talked to IDA, they know how important it is for us to get the additional, just like we have the surety, so there's surety that you asked for, it's there, that got done right away. The SOC report, very difficult.
The surety was done in July, and it did, in all due respect, they did get it, but it took them seven months to get it to us, and we're covered for $1 million per occurrence. You know, out of $10 million, I would have liked to see more, but...
And again, Councilman Peluso, I will say this for the record, I work on many, many things, there were other people involved interacting with the insurance people, and now that there is that person, that individual that was responsible, maybe had too many things also on their plate, however, this, you talk about a sacred trust, I've negotiated with the people that I would never want to ever, ever, and I know you're not saying that, because I know, and I will do my due diligence, and Ann can attest to the fact that when Ray and she came into my office to go over some of the audit comments, when they said the SOC report still wasn't in, because I sat next to Ann in August when they called up, we were here, and they said, we got it, it's done, and when it didn't happen, I literally, you know I have a sense of urgency, I jumped out of my chair and I went right in...
I know you had jumped on this immediately.
So, I, you know, I can't go back seven months or five months...
My tolerance for a vendor that were entrusting $10 million that I would have fired IDA a long time ago and got a new one, I wouldn't put an RP out for another vendor right away.
It's not that easy. I mean, you know, the medical doesn't just stop in January or December 31st.
They can never stop medical.
It doesn't, no, but hear me out, it doesn't because it was an audit comment, they weren't aware that they needed this report, they've had it done before, it's a huge audit, it takes months to have done. Not that it should have been done earlier, they had it finished, but then, they weren't happy with the results of how it was written. It was strictly what it was written. We have the report now, we got the surety coverage, we had it all. Now we're going back and punishing or saying negative things about them when it's all good right now. I don't know why we're going backwards here. I gotta be honest with you.
Well, because we're not going backwards, we're stating that the facts of the matter is that it took an indefinite amount of time to become partially compliant, they are partially compliant, not completely compliant. We're reviewing that.
They complied, let me say this, I'm sorry, but they are compliant to what we've asked. What was asked of them last year, they are compliant, okay? And I'll say this about being the CFO here, it's personal for me, I have my own personally responsible for the finances here. It is not something I take lightly, all right?
That's true, I know that.
I mean, you could all say, everybody could say whatever they want, but guess whose license it is, it's me.
Absolutely.
And I have to watch that dollar mount like it's my own. I don't allow anything other than the exact amount of money that is going to be paid, to be paid out of that checkbook, and it's done every week. It's not done in a lump sum big amount of money, all right, and it's to the penny. And we reconcile it, we watch it, and I just want you to know that, it's not, it's not just throwing money into an account.
And I'll say this, I'll say this...
Absolutely, you do a great job in what you do.
In response to Ann and Ellen, they worked on this due diligently. We've had meetings with IDA to get the SOC report, and like Ellen said, Ellen came to my office, we spoke to the president of the company, and he, and I told him he had a deadline to get it to us, and he got it to us on that Friday. That being said, I feel, I don't vote, but I feel comfortable with Ray and the attorney's opinions on it, and I think that, you know, moving forward, they got to March, what, 31st, 2016?
Right, correct.
And then, you know, it's where it's at. But I will say this about Ann, too, she comes to my office on many occasions when it comes to spending the taxpayers' dollars, and she doesn't just go and spend it thriftily, she does it in a manner that, as professional, and I, you know, I have to commend her on that. And whatever concern she has about anything in town, IDA or related, anything, she's on it, and she just doesn't let nothing go by the wayside.
And again, just in, not conclusion, but when Ray, because of the nature of Ray being so fastidious, that's when, as Ann is saying, they were in compliance with the SOC report, what he did is he drilled down further. It wasn't part of the audit comment to get the second, you know, when he saw that, he did his due diligence and said, we'll give them some time, but they need to comply with these additional reports, because they have other entities that are involved with them. So, I know he's a bulldog, and you got two bulldogs here, you know, we're gonna get it done, and we're gonna work with the company, and we have, you know, I hate to say it this way, but there is an out, in fact, if they're not compliant, because I'm not satisfied, we work hard to make sure that, and if, you know, I'm not, you know, this is, as Ann said, you know, when, a long time ago, a nice lady named Pat Vitacchia said, nothing personal, and we went out in the hallway and I said, Pat, it's all personal, this is not just a job to me, this is my avocation, my profession, and hey, I'm not perfect and I make mistakes, but I'm telling you, I'm in it, and I'm in it till I get it done and we get it done right. So, that's my commitment, that's Ann's commitment, that's who you got here, and I'm not going anywhere. And you can find me, if I was home, I'd only be in Denville, so I'm not too far from here, so...
I'm home with you.
Yeah, we live here, where he's at.
And if anyone's not happy, I'm not happy.
No, and you know, Councilman Peluso, I applaud you, yes, you are passionate, you are someone that comes all the time, and I love you for it, and people say, oh, is this, or is that, no, we want, we not have to know what you're thinking or what you're asking for, so we can deliver.
I read everything I question, everybody.
I know you do, and you know you do.
That's my responsibility.
And that is your responsibility, and you live up to it.
Yes.
And so, we live up to try to comply with your requests, the residents' requests, the mayor's requests, all the council personnel.
And I'm not stressing that I don't trust in both your judgments of what you do, but I'm saying that I'm just highly dissatisfied with the company for its inactions and for creating an audit exception, and not realizing the priority to us, and creating an exposure for us as well. And I'm glad Ann brought up the other point about the broker as well, because I'm equally disappointed in the broker, in the sense that the broker presented us a company that they didn't do their due diligence to see if this company was compliant with the SOC report and had liability insurance for us. So, you know, it's not only IDA, but it's the broker as well, they should have presented us with a more solid contract that, you know, we wouldn't have to even go through this today as we sit here.
The broker's fine, by the way, just letting you know.
That's your personal opinion.
It is.
Well, a broker that presents anything to us, that presents a company that's not compliant and creates an audit exception is not good.
Sure.
I don't agree with you, sorry, respectfully, Mayor.
Well, let me say this, this SOC report is required for third-party, you know, for third-party payments, I mean, not every insurance company, I don't believe, needs that. I'm not really sure, I'm sure that someone could speak to that better, but being self-insured is why we need that report, and it's how, and I tell you what, I requested it from everyone now, including the payroll companies, you know?
Absolutely.
So, it's a learning experience.
That's where it all started, with Ameripen.
That's where it started with Ameripen.
I'm very glad we have all of you on board, because you're our eyes, so thank you very much.
Scares the hell out of me, yeah.
No, because our license is on the line, and, you know, my integrity and my name is on the line, and we take it as a second, your name is on the line.
Any other questions, Council?
Thank you for letting us speak.
Ellen, don't let us down.
I won't let you down. Lou.
Resolution 2015-190, Resolution Township Council, Township of Precipity Troy Hills, awarding the contract for health benefits to insurance design administrators.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Understanding we need a third-party provider, administrator, and that I have to protect our employees, I have no choice but to approve it, but I'm approving on a temporary basis. I said deadline, March 31st, 2016.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Resolution 2015-201, Resolution of the Township Council, the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, authorizing 2015 budget appropriation transfers.
Motion made by Mr. Valori. Seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Resolution 2015-202, Resolution of the Township Council, the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, authorizing an agreement for the City of Jersey City and the Jersey City Municipal Utilities Authority for the bulk purchase of potable water. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero. Seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
I just want to say for the record, I have not viewed the contract, and I rely upon our business administrator, Ellen, and I do trust her opinion, so I'm gonna vote yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Thank you.
Resolution 2015-203, Resolution of the Township Council, the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, authorizing budget appropriation and reserve transfers. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Peluso, seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Karifi?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, before I adjourn the meeting, I just want to, this is Mr. Stanton's last meeting. Just want to personally thank him for his service. I know we had a lot of big issues come up in town over the last few years, and again, I just want to thank you for your service.
Thank you, thanks, guys.
Thank you, Brian.
And one of these days, we'll have a certificate for you.
Before a plaque? At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Peluso.